Good morning. It's nine o'clock. Time for the October 11th County Board meeting. Roll call would indicate all Commissioners are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Okay, our first item is to approve the agenda, but before we do that, we'll need to make a couple of changes to the agenda. We'll need to have a Human Services Board meeting, which we will do right after the consent agenda, and that would be related to items 10, 11, and 12 that are on the consent agenda. So they would come off of the consent and move to the Human Services Board meeting as they are action items for Human Service Board. Other than that, we'd be looking for approval of the agenda unless there's anything else.
I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Clark. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have the Public Access Forum. Anyone wishing to address the Board on issues not found on today's agenda may do so at this time either by attending the meeting in person or joining virtually. Not sure if, don't think we have anybody virtual today, do we?
We do not.
Okay. To join virtually, call 656-3602 or email the info@co.sterns.mn.us by noon on Monday preceding the meeting. Individual comments are limited three to four minutes, and County Board members will not dialogue with speakers, but rather refer to appropriate county department. Citizens may speak at Public Access Forum once per month.
Mr. Chair, we did, we actually have a request for someone to speak, but it was on the vacation rental, so I told them it was on the agenda.
Okay.
They can use other means to contact the Board.
Yep. Yeah, and we also have elections on as an agenda item too, so. So anyone wishing to speak to the County Board on an item not on today's agenda, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
My name is Matt Olson. I address 805 R. L. Road, Department 206, St. Cloud, Minnesota, 56303. Honorable Commissioners of the Stearns County Commissioners Board, my name is Matt Olson, as I said, and I am the Director of Advocacy for a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that provides services and resources to individuals in recovery from the disease, disease, excuse me, of alcoholism and addiction. We provide services and resources free of charge. We do this not only because it is the right thing to do, but because each of us, the Board of Directors, as well as each of our employees, has to one extent or another, lived experience with this disease and the devastating effects it has and continues to has, not only on ourselves, the individual sufferers, but also on our families, our friends, and our community at large. In the year of 2020, there were over 1,000 drug overdose deaths in the state of Minnesota alone. Naturally, the numbers are far more frightening. In 2020, on average, 44 people in the United States died each and every day from drug overdose at the end of the year. That was over 16,000 people gone, erased, due to the ravages of a disease that is absolutely treatable and survivable. In February 2022, the Big Three, Big Pharma, drug pushers, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, McKesson and the opioid manufacturer Johnson &amp; Johnson, agreed to a global settlement of $26 billion to address the harm they have directly caused by the promotion, the sale, and the distribution of OxyContin and other highly addictive and dangerous drugs. $300 million of that settlement will go to Minnesota. It is currently estimated, because I looked it up just beforehand, that around $5.3 million of this money will go to Stearns County. Now, ultimately, it is up to you honorable County Commissioners to decide how this money is allocated. I've said the term recovery here a bit, and I just wanted to quickly define what that is. Recovery, defined by the Oxford Dictionary, from the Anglo-Normate French word "recovery", which means "to get back". One, a return to a normal state of health, mind, or strength. Two, the action or process of regaining possession or control of something stolen or lost. A portion of the money in this settlement is to be set aside for recovery. Now, I speak from my own personal experience as a man in long-term recovery from substance use disorder, when I've used the old terminology here, the disease of alcoholism and addiction. I attended multiple treatment centers, counselors' offices, doctors, psychiatrists, you name it, but I did not find recovery in those places. I found recovery in my community. I found recovery in the places where organizations like mine works. Recovery does not happen in treatment centers, it does not happen in institutions, it happens in the community. And so, my request, honorable County Commissioners, just beforehand, you may have noticed some envelopes in front of your desks. This is to an event coming up next week at my organization's headquarters for a key leader engagement event. It's annual. My request is simply that you show up if you have the time, and even if you don't, please make the time. This is an issue that affects everyone in this community, everyone in this room, regardless of whether you suffer from substance use disorder or not. I guarantee you know someone or love someone who knows someone or loves someone who suffers from this disease or who was affected by it. And so, please, thank you for allowing me to speak, and that is all from me, so.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak on any item not on today's agenda? Please come to the microphone.
Good morning. Peter Wilson, Sartell, Minnesota. Have a couple things. One is on, when I go to the different, not only the County Commissioners, especially the last meeting or two, but all of these types of things, city council meetings or school board meetings, you become readily aware that most of the problems we have here with money evolve around the massive increase of poverty in the area. That increase has been driven to a great degree by several things. One of these is the refugee resettlement program. I was here while there was questions about halting it or suspending it until review. There were those who did not feel that was necessary. You go to a school board meeting, or you come here, the additional money needed to address these matters of education and them not being done, poverty and it not being addressed, and massive complexes of what will be some point in time in the future, you know, massive areas of poverty which exist for individuals. I think we need to start looking at this as a form of a illness, not of the individuals, but you're incenting and promoting them to come here. I've been to the city council in St. Cloud, where basically there was money coming to a local or an entity to build a big facility, and that amount of money was more so in Sherburne County than it was in Benton or Stearns. That's where they built it. It's a poverty, it's a poverty program that benefits many individuals. I guess, I'm hoping you look at much of what you do in a long-term effect. In essence, when you look at something like that, or any of these policies or procedures, you say, what is the impact going to be next year? What will it be in 10 years, 30 or 40 years? If we cannot effectively do that, we have to start coining new terms, and I think let's come up with one. If I've heard this before, I stand corrected. Munchhounds and proxy by pro-regressivism. In essence, we create the problems, or problems are created, which then solutions need to be determined, which people make money on, and various organizations and entities transfer it, and it becomes a giant existence of its own. I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak at today's Public Access Forum? Please step up to the microphone, state your name, address. And again, we're limiting the time to three to four minutes per speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is James Albert, St. Joseph, Minnesota. Just wanted to be able to come before the Commission on this morning and commend the work of Central Minnesota for doing a fantabulous job of being able to address the issues that have come before us. There are many things that are wrong, and there have been many things that have been wrong over the years, but we have come together as a community to be able to address each and every one of them, working across the aisle in cases where that's the case, working across partisanship where that's the case. But what I can tell you is that I come from a place or from a time and from a people that all things were not always all equal, and we are here to be able to make sure that that is an opportunity that we all get a chance to be able to share. Opportunities like this, to be able to stand up in front of each other, to be able to air our concerns, and be able to actually be able to interject into the processes by which we handle these things, whether it be spending money, or whether it be actually addressing situations or circumstances, are all great. I've been a part of this community for almost 30 years, and I'm very proud of St. Cloud. I'm very proud of Stearns County. I'm very proud of being in this community and doing the work that we have all been committed to being able to do. In particular, one of the things that I wanted to make sure that I addressed while I had the opportunity to do so, we're coming up on an election season, and it's an off-year election, meaning that it's not a presidential one, but it's still an election nonetheless. And every vote, every vote matters. Every vote counts. I am four generations removed from slavery. I am three generations removed from Jim Crow. I am one generation removed from the Civil Rights Movement. I haven't always had the opportunity to be able to vote. Me and my people come from places and times where my mom and my dad grew up with segregated water fountains and restrooms, where you couldn't walk into the front door of a restaurant, you had to go around to the back in order to be able to do things. And so, we sit at a place and a time that even though there are a lot of things that are going on and a lot of things that are a challenge for us, this is our time to be able to solve these problems of our day. Those that came before us, they solved the problems of theirs, and they did the best that they could. But what we shouldn't do is push the reverse button so that we go backwards in the midst of the things that we're doing. And so, when we have conversations that would seemingly stifle voting or stifle conversations that allow for this kind of discourse to happen, we don't need to move in that direction. And I support the work of the Commission and the work of the county to be able to allow for free and fair elections in every place and every place that it is available, whether it be by mail-in ballot, or whether we have multiple places to be able to do that. There are a host of things that we can do, but one of the chief parts of this entire country is the ability for every single person to have an opportunity to participate in the discourse of this government. And I want to commend again the work of this Commission and the work of the government overall to be able to do that. We're not perfect, but we're working on it. So I want to thank you all for your time and thank you for your opportunity.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here wishing to speak on any item not on today's agenda?
My name is Virgil Fox, Algrad, Minnesota. Stearns County farmer for 60 years and more. In 2020, I was assessed $95,000 for a ditch.
Virgil, can you speak into the microphone?
For a ditch that's on my farm, crosses my farm diagonally. $95,000. In order, I had hired attorneys to appeal this, and what the attorneys for the watershed did was added a phrase to the statue that was not there. So, in order to try to get my appeal enacted, I had to hire an attorney out of Minneapolis, and it cost me close to $60,000 to get my appeal back, and it took two years of court action. The attorneys for the watershed fought me all the way. They're supposed to help the people. They fought me all the way until now. Anyway, so, I wanted to address the Commissioners because you have a hand in what gets appointed to the watershed, and I asked for it to address you, and I was denied that question. Here's the letter that I got from the Office of County Administration. Since there is no action to be taken by the County Board regarding your complaint about the watershed or ditch, your issue will not be placed on the County Board agenda. We just heard people talking about discrimination, saying that it goes a long ways, your discrimination. Now, I could speak for hours on this, but I'm not going to be cut off by you people. I'm my own self, and I'm going to tell, ask you why.
But you're still limited, Virgil. You're still limited to three to four minutes, because we have other business to conduct too.
I don't operate by that, those rules. I'm done, I'm done with what I want to tell you, but what I want to tell you is that since I have, your issue will not be placed on the County Board agenda. Now, Steve, why were you at the watershed meeting if you're not part of the watershed? Tell me.
I'm just an ex-official who attends the meetings.
Okay, this, this pretty much contradicts what this letter says.
But we're not, I'm not a voting member of the watershed.
But I might add that my son was at the meeting last night, asking how the minutes were recorded. They don't record minutes. The only thing the watershed does is on the minutes, it says Virgil Fox was there, he spoke. It does not say what I said, the questions I asked or anything. We have a major problem in this county. The watershed is running this county, or when you have an entity that contacts the people, they should be also answerable to the people. They're not. They are trying everything they can do to, well, to disrespect my self-esteem.
Thanks, Virgil.
I need, I'm asking for a major investigation of the watershed. When the attorneys for the watershed can make up their own rules to deny a person the right to appeal a $95,000 decision, or, that's why we need an investigation. This is major corruption, major. Can, can we ask, can I ask that? I'm not going to take any more of your valuable time here, because I was denied my full time that I should have. I could explain a lot more about what's going on in this for, for me. My, my son, I was just getting, I was just getting there. My son was there last night, questioning how the minutes are taken, taken care of. Can you imagine one of the board, of you people appointed, one of the board, ask my son, well, are you the owner of the land? Hey, can, can, can my son ask a question for our land, and the watershed people ask him, are you the owner of the land? Hey, everybody sitting on the board is not the owner of my land either. Thank you.
Thanks, Virgil. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in front of the Board on any item not on today's agenda? Again, anyone else wishing to speak on any item not on today's agenda? Last time, not seeing anybody get up. We will move on to the consent agenda items. Again, we've removed 10, 11, and 12, which will go on the Human Services Board meeting shortly after the consent agenda is approved. Anybody have anything on the remaining consent items that they have questions on, would like to have pulled? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve them?
I move approval.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmeyer made the motion?
I'll second that with the exception, exception of 10, 11, and 12.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next up, we'll recess our regular County Board meeting and open the Human Services Board meeting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Administrator. I have three items on the Human Services Consent Agenda today. The first one's Item C10 on Page 60, and it's to accept the statewide health improvement grant. This funding is part of the Minnesota's campaign to address top-leading causes of health disparities, particularly in the areas of obesity and vaping and tobacco use. Second item is C11 on Page 63, and it's our Stronger Foundations Grant, which is our evidence-based home visiting grant. You may recall that we had been here previously to discuss that this used to be part of the maternal infant and early child home visiting, like the McVee Grant. That ends at the end of this year, and they've renamed it the Stronger Foundations Grant, so it's to accept those funds to do those activities. And then finally, Item C12 on Page 66, which is the Human Services Claims Paid for the entire period of September 2nd through September 30th, 2022. And I am available for questions.
Okay, anybody have questions for Melissa? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second?
Second.
And Commissioner Persky, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Okay, with that, we'll close the Human Services Board meeting and resume our regular Board meeting. And next up is Environmental Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Angie Berg, Environmental Services. All right, next on your agenda is a further discussion on the vacation home rental topic. And we have, just by way of a little bit of background, we've had over eight meetings on this topic in the last six months. I would say it's probably safe to say that there's been hundreds of emails, phone conversations, phone calls between the Commissioners, the public, our office. The goal is, as with many parts of zoning, is to strike a balance between allowing one property owner the use of their property for a short-term rental without impacting the use and enjoyment of neighboring properties. The standards proposed, set forth, are currently more restrictive than what we have, and some would, may disagree that it's a balance, but that's really what we're, we're here to talk about with the Board today. The purpose of today's meeting is to make any final changes to the proposal that we discussed last week at your special meeting, and if you're inclined, adopt ordinance number 640, and then our office would work with townships to understand what this ordinance means for them if they have a moratorium. The proposal is that the ordinance would be effective January 1st. That will give townships time to react. I have reached out to all the five townships that have moratoriums, asking them if I can attend one of their upcoming meetings. I'm going to Monson on Monday night, and I would suspect I'll hear from others shortly. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll pause and decide if you all have questions.
Anyone have questions for Angie? Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
You, you and Chelly are hardly newbies at this, and have handled controversial issues before. What would you anticipate to be the timeframe for something to come out of this body? I don't have a preference on how that should go forward, but what do you see, based on the public feedback and so forth?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think that there needs to be closure on the issue. We've heard time and time again from We've heard time and time again from the townships with moratoriums that, yes, they can be more restrictive, that will always be the case, but they are absolutely waiting for the county to make a decision. And some of those moratoriums will be expiring starting in January. So I think closure is important. I think being a bit more restrictive is okay. I think defining some of the enforcement and options for permitting are important. So again, if no decision is made to enact an ordinance today, the, a decision, not making a decision is still a decision, right? So the current ordinance would remain into effect, which generally speaking is less restrictive than what we have. We're prepared to administer and enforce and educate and work with individuals to comply with the ordinance. So to your point, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think closure is needed. If you would not adopt the ordinance today, at some point, you probably would want to have a new public hearing process because of the time and space between August and today.
Anybody have any further comments for Angie? The only thing I had mentioned was maybe on that good neighbor sheet, if we, a good idea would be probably to add the local septic, who pumps the septic just in case there should be a problem. That was the only minor thing. Commissioner Persky?
Mr. Chair, yeah, Angie, again, appreciate all the work from environmental, also from the Board. And on the planning commission, you know, we've struggled with this for quite a while. And we're not going to get it perfect this time around either. So before we move forward, I'll tell you what, I really appreciate the input of this Board, and I don't always see things completely fail-safe, if I want to say it. And so let's all take a look at that, and if we can see any modifications we need to perhaps make, let's discuss those. Because I would like to see if there are things we may be missed and correct those things. But by all means, it's, it's a, it's not going to be written in stone that they will be making adjustments down the road. And so I do think coming out a little more restrictive is the better approach in that you can then loosen things up than to come the other way and have to take things away from people. So taking a look at what we have, I think we continue to move forward with that. But again, let's all take a look at that and be receptive to what each other have to say about it.
And this isn't going to be perfect, no matter what. So, you know, we have to give the directions at some point to move ahead and, and the townships can be more restrictive than we are, so that there could be some townships that are going to make it more restrictive. Commissioner Clark?
Mr. Chair, I think building off of what you both had just said, we get a chance to put this in place, get some feedback, see how it works, see what the challenges are, the amount of public who've really tried to help us weigh, weigh this and improve it, try to make it better, in some ways for all, right? Is having clearer processes is a good thing. So I think I'm just trying to support what you both just said, which is this is the next step. But Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you often talk about it's not the end of the journey, it's really about how are we making things perhaps better than what we currently have.
One other thing, Mr. Chair, you know, there are valid arguments on both sides. And I think we all understand that, that, you know, we can loosen things up and just let them go and have business have at it, or we can be very restrictive and protective of, of the lakes and of the neighborhoods. But, you know, all these are valid points, but we do have to come to a point where we need to have an ordinance by which we operate. So we'll have to bring it to a close.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, I think we'd be looking for a motion to either adopt. No, this isn't a public hearing. So the motion would be either to adopt the changes as presented or not.
I will move that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clark. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mergan. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of enacting the ordinance with the changes signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just really quickly, thank, thank you in the Department for all your work and the many citizens who have been trying to help us wrestle with this. It's really been pretty amazing. Thank you. Half the journey, I know, we're not done.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure this, this won't be the end. Hopefully, you know, some of it's gotten better and hopefully we don't stumble too much as we go along. The next item, I'm wondering, Mike, could we switch the agenda around so everybody doesn't have to clear out a room and then come back in?
Certainly can, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's move on then to the Auditor Treasure, if everybody is available to speak on this.
Yeah, we do have guests joining us online here, so it might take just a second.
Okay. Well, while we get set up here, why don't we just take a five-minute break? Okay, I'd like to call the Board meeting back to order. Mr. Persky? Okay, so we're going to move into the Auditor Treasure with election update and appointments.
Yep, I'm Randy Schreifel, the Stearns County Auditor Treasure. So we're here again to go over some more election information. With me today is Laura Lowenbach. She's the Director of Elections and Service Center, Roxanne Garretts, our election supervisor, Dick Deehanston from our IT department. And we're going over some cyber things, so Dick's going to help answer some questions if they come up. And we also have two special guests, Bill Eckblad from the Minnesota Secretary of State's Office, that's the Election Security Manager, and David Maida, the Director of Elections at the Secretary of State's Office. So thank you for joining us. We don't know, I guess the PowerPoint we were not going to have up, but we're going to go through four main areas today, the post-election review, election recounts, cybersecurity, and canvassing. And first, I'm going to turn it over to Laura to go through the post-election review.
All right. Hi, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having us again to talk about education on election processes. So the topic today that I will be discussing is the post-election review. This is going to happen actually after the canvas. Randy will be talking about the canvas later in the slides. But after the general election, the canvassing board will randomly select by lot a set of precincts to audit the results of the ballot tabulators. So this, basically, they'll choose the precincts at the canvassing board, and the number of precincts to be reviewed is determined by the number of voters that you have, registered voters. In the audit, the certain offices are counted by hand. This year, it will be the governor, the US Senator, and US Representative. So Stearns County, as of September 1st, we have approximately 95,000 registered voters. So we are required to have three precincts for the post-election review in 2022. So just a kind of side note, the registered voters is not the population. I know sometimes we get questions about what a registered voter is. In 2020, Stearns County had a population of approximately 159,000 people, so 95,000 of them are registered to vote. The post-election review will happen in Stearns County at the Service Center on November 21st this year. The rules to a post-election review, first of all, they must be open to the public. We will have election judges that have party balance present to assist with the procedures. All of the ballots from the three precincts that will be counted by hand, and then this will just validate the results compiled by the electronic voting systems, including all of the ballot tabulators.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the recount process. So there is a publicly funded recount and a discretionary recount. So for the publicly funded, for the federal, state, and local offices and ballot questions, it's less than one, one quarter to one half of 1% of the total votes cast in that election. Another criteria is 10, 10 votes or less when the total number of votes cast is 400 or less. And this will depend on the variables that this would, what triggers that is the type of office. So depending on the type of office for the recount, it's either a quarter percent or a half percent. So, and for the state, federal, or judicial races, when there's a recount, it must be, must be filed by the second day after the primary or the general election canvas board. For any local races or ballot questions, it must be filed within seven days of the canvas or the general or in a special election. Now for the discretionary recount, the losing candidate can request a manual recount that would be at their expense when the vote difference is greater than what is described for the publicly funded recount. The losing candidate must also provide a bond, cash, or surety set by the governing body for payment of the recount process. And that must be filed within seven days after completion of the canvas or the general election. So part of the process is, so we would need to receive a written request, which is required and filed within specified time limit depending on the, the race. And then all recounts must be open to the public and the procedures conducted in public view. The ballots are hand-counted by precincts, they're sorted into piles, there is two recount staff at each table, and the candidates or their representatives may challenge the ballots. And then the results of the recount are certified. So in 2020, there was a discretionary recount for the State Senate District 14 that was between Jerry Ralph and Eric Putnam. So the total votes cast in that race was 39,488. And as you can see there, that the totals for Ralph and Putnam, Ralph had 18,002 and Putnam had 18,318. So it's slightly over the publicly funded threshold. So at that point, Jerry Ralph did request a hand recount of the 2020 election, and he chose to start with Sherburne County at that point. And they, and they can choose how many precincts they want recounted. So at that time, he, they did recount the St. Cloud Ward to precincts 5, 6, and 7. And, and this was something that he, he funded as, as the candidate. So there were 35 precincts in total in that race, 26 from Stearns, there were five from Benton and four from Sherburne. So they did three, and after doing three, the total votes tabulated for that were 2,977 versus the recount of 2,978. So there was a change of one. And he chose at that time to end the recount prior to the inclusion of any, any adjustments in the final certified vote of votes. So they did a sample recount, and at that time, there wasn't much of a change, so he, he did choose. So he did choose to end it at that point.
So we presented this one to give you an idea of what a discretionary recount can look like. And the candidates have this ability to do this. It also demonstrates the timely reporting of results. If you remember, Sherburne County was a little late in reporting results. So of course, that was then viewed as, well, something wrong here, what's going on? And so I think that also sparked then the need for it to have the recount. But as you can see, the numbers came right out. And the one vote difference could have been a number of things, but I think most likely is the hand recount was probably wrong by one, so.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question before we move on? And you might not have been prepared to answer this one. How many people were involved in the recount for those three precincts?
I'm not aware of that because that was held in Sherburne County. I am not sure, I'm sure they probably, I'm guessing they maybe had two to three teams do it, but I'm not...
I just thank you for the public, it's helpful to know how many people included.
Right.
Whoever's on the campaigns.
Each table would have a couple people at them, you'd have a few staff people.
Right.
And then each table would have one person from each party that would be observing. So yeah, there's a number of people.
Right. Just helpful for people to know.
It is, right.
Thanks.
So you get a lot of questions about our election equipment. So this is just a slide to kind of show what our main equipment is. The pole pads, which are voter registration check-in and verification. The DS-200, DS-450, and the DS-850s are our ballot tabulators. And then the Omni Ballot is an assistive marking device. So the vendors that we use, you can see No Ink is the vendor for our pole pads. That is an actual iPad, which is manufactured in most likely Vietnam. But the programming happens in St. Louis, Missouri. And for our tabulators, ESNS is our vendor that we use. Originally, that was a vendor right out of St. Cloud, Minnesota, was called Business Records. And eventually, Business Records sold off their election department, which became ESNS eventually. So they are manufactured right in the US as well, Omaha, Nebraska. And then we use Sea Change, which is a local vendor. They program right out of St. Cloud. Same with the Omni Ballot. The manufacturer is Democracy Live, which is from Seattle, Washington. And then Sea Change is our programmer. And the Omni Ballot actually is programmed out of New Hope or St. Cloud. So most likely, New Hope is their, one of their locations. So from here, we will actually turn it out over to our guest speakers today.
So just on this slide, you know, there's talking that all this stuff happens in China or overseas, but programming of the equipment happens right here. And ESNS, you know, which is now a, you know, international company, grew out of St. Cloud Wade Park, Minnesota. So that's kind of an encouraging, nice story anyway.
So, do you know who's up first, Randy, or?
I think Bill, you're up first, I believe.
Hi, good morning, are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, well, again, good morning. Thank you for the chance to say a few words this morning about election cybersecurity. As Randy mentioned, my name is Bill Eckblad. I am the Election Security Navigator in the Office of the Secretary of State. In that role, I work primarily with Minnesota's 87 counties on issues related to election security, both cyber and physical, talking about threat-related information that we're aware of through our federal and other partners, and as well as making them aware of resources available. So for today's discussion, we're going to focus a little bit on election cybersecurity. And I think it's important to begin with an understanding of the two significant aspects of that. So most attention, if you will, in the field or the topic of election cybersecurity tends to focus on voting equipment. As was mentioned earlier, these are the actual pieces of equipment provided by vendors that enable the conduct of an election. So you're talking about the tabulators, the voting machines, the assistive technology, and some of the peripheral devices that are used to make all that stuff work. The other significant aspect of election cybersecurity are things like the voter registration system, the day-to-day workstations that are used by, for example, your staff there in Stearns County to conduct the administrative tasks associated with planning and conducting election, and those types of systems. The significant difference from our perspective really is that that voting equipment category is all tested at the federal level for security, you know, to be secure. Very rigorous and significant testing done in labs that are certified by the Election Assistance Commission. They are required to be very transparent. There's a great deal of information out there posted by the EAC that anyone can look at for what goes into those tests and the results that they produce. And again, very rigorous process. When that equipment comes to the Secretary of State's Office for certification, our office makes sure that it's been through all those tests and has passed and has the appropriate certification from those federally certified labs before we proceed with our local certification testing, which is in the realm of functionality, to make sure that the equipment performs according to state statute. These are things like, can it accommodate the size ballot that our statute requires? The very functional aspects that Minnesota statute requires. So we are not redoing that federal security testing at the state level. It's very, again, rigorous, requires a lot of expertise and complex facilities. And to be honest, 50 states would not be able to replicate that to the rigor and level that the federal government does. And so that's why we honor or accept that federal certification from a security perspective. With regards to election-related systems, again, voter registration systems, in our case, the statewide voter registration system, or SVRS, and those systems used day-to-day by our office, by your offices, and all the counties and many cities across the state. That's where we have a little bit more involvement in working on issues related to cybersecurity. So our office protects and defends the SVRS system, the voter registration system, and works with counties to make sure they understand the importance of defending their connections to that system. So those day-to-day systems that are used to access SVRS through our secure means. The counties have the responsibility to protect and defend those systems on their networks. And it's why we have worked hard to focus on our relationships with counties, not only election offices, but IT offices as well, and to make sure they have a good, solid appreciation of the county and local role in defending that statewide voter registration system. Like to go to the next slide, please? So a little bit about what we call the Navigator Program. This is a concept that came out of the November 2016 election, in which you'll recall a great deal of press reporting on foreign adversaries attempting to mess with US elections essentially, to various degrees of success. Secretary Simon has spoken at length about how our state was not penetrated. Other states were not so lucky. But the bottom line is it brought a great deal of attention and scrutiny on the risks associated with foreign government influence or interference in US elections. And it was realized that there was a fair bit of gaps out there between federal and state awareness of these threats and risks, and down to the local level and what each role, which each entity, which role each entity had, excuse me, in defending and protecting the systems that we talked about on the last slide. So Congress allocated some additional funding in the Help America Vote Act in 2018 that made its way to the states and the Secretary of State's Office in 2019 or so to begin this Navigator Program. It's a concept we borrowed from other states that did similar things. Illinois, most notably, had more significant problems in the 2016 election. And so they moved out quickly with this idea of building sort of a liaison role between the state election office and those local offices that actually do the hard work of conducting elections. So that's the general concept of the Navigator Program. Be able to communicate, again, to both elections leaders at each county and their IT counterparts about threats, risks, and resources that are available to defend and protect elections. So that network of people really is the backbone of our cyber navigator program to protect elections in Minnesota. So today, again, we work with all 87 counties and a lot of the larger cities. It's mostly about sharing information. We do that via an information sharing platform. Things like threat information provided by federal partners, some best practices from industry, from academia, from federal partners, state partners. We orchestrate tabletop exercises to help our counties be as prepared as possible to defend against that adversary-type activity. We've administered some security grant programs to help provide fiscal resources to shore up cyber defenses or physical security defenses, or in some cases, needs related to accessibility for elections. We continue to tighten up the system that we're most responsible for, which is the statewide voter registration system, and looking for anything we can do to make that as strong and secure as possible. And a number of other initiatives that all contribute to making this entire system as secure as it possibly can be so that all Minnesotans can feel there are no doubts about the safety and security of our elections. That is the extent of what I had prepared to talk to you about, but I am prepared to attempt to answer any questions you might have as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at this point, or Commissioner Clark?
I know that you could probably go. Thank you for being here today. And I know you could probably talk to us or talk with us about this for quite a long time, but just briefly, are there any potential threats that you are monitoring at this point?
So we're always monitoring.
What are you?
Absolutely, and a fair question, thank you. Our federal partners, again, are really the eyes and ears for those most significant foreign nation-state threats. And they have told us that while they continue to be vigilant, they are not currently tracking specific threats that are focused on Minnesota elections, for example. It's early in the season, we expect that we could still very much see that activity ramp up. And so it does take constant vigilance. The often-used phrase is, you know, a race without a finish line. We are constantly looking for that type of activity and expecting it. You know, in cybersecurity, you either have been breached or will be. So we take that mindset very seriously and make sure that we are ready when they come knocking. But at this point, it's about vigilance and readiness.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Okay?
If there's any other questions, we also have Dick Deehanston from the Stearns County IT too. So we've been working on cybersecurity, you know, for a long time too, but certainly a lot more this year, so. Okay, moving on. Election education at county board meetings, so we've been here a number of times and gone through a lot of these items. So this is just kind of a recap of what we've all covered in the past. If there's anything else you'd like to see, certainly let us know, and we'll cover that also. Public forum questions. The last meeting, I believe, that there was a question on why there's only eight machines tested at the Stearns County Service Center. So the machines that happen, that are in the precincts, those are getting tested by those precincts. So a city or township that has a polling place will do two tests. They'll do a pre-public accuracy test that we encourage them to do soon. And then if that's fine, then they do a public accuracy test that's open to the public to view. So all machines and all the programming is thoroughly tested. Now I'll turn it over to Roxanne for the next question.
I'm just going to cover the next two bullet points. So some of the questions that we've received is, you know, what about the voter rolls? When are they audited? So on an annual basis, the state does an automated process that updates any voter records in our state voter registration system to inactive. So for example, if someone has not voted or updated their voter registration within the previous four years, they are automatically set to inactive. Another question that we've received in the past, what about, you know, deceased voters? So, and I think we've talked about this before, and I know in some of the radio talk shows that we've had in the past, that has come up. So when a citizen has passed away, we receive a weekly report from the Department of Health. And we go into the system and inactivate that voter. So that is how the voter rolls are updated, it is an annual process. Another question that we've received is, where is a college student's polling place? This is a little unique because a college can, a college student can choose either their permanent residence or their college address as their polling place. So the post-secondary institution will provide the county with a housing list. So if the college student decides that they want to vote at their college residence, their name is put on this housing list, and that is one of the election day documents that they can use to register to vote. So this list that we give from the county is delivered to the election judges and the clerk in those appropriate precincts on election day. So they can, so that is for use with a photo of student identification as a proof of residence on that list. So along with that list and a picture ID, that college student can register to vote at their college address.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, because I don't see it on there, and I didn't hear you say, that's a state law.
That is a state law.
That's actually been in place for quite a while.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, then another question or request we've had is to require no voting, and then all voters to show a Minnesota ID. And obviously, that would be violating state law, and I assume they don't want us to violate state law. So for a registered voter, they don't need to show an ID. Obviously, if they're registering, then they do need to show some sort of ID. Typically, when you're registering to voting, the two things that you need to do is prove who you are, which is a photo ID, and prove where you live. If you have a current driver's license or ID card, that would have both on there, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to keep doing this. And Randy, I think just for the public, I mean, we all have to sign. So we're attesting that we are.
Yes.
So we might not be showing a photo ID, but we are attesting that it is us who is signing by our name on the registered vote.
Right, and if that was happening, we would see that. We don't have voters come in and say, oh, somebody already signed on my line. We don't, we don't see that, so.
Okay, thank you.
So if I can just ask a question, going back to Roxanne on the college students again. So if they're registered at their home polling place, and they go on, they decide they're going to vote here because they're staying here, is there something then that will register that, let's say they did vote at home, now they come here to vote, that's going to negate one of the votes?
So one of the examples, so let's say they did an absentee from their home residence, and then on election day, they register to vote at their precinct. With a poll pad, we can get a list, and it depends on whether they're within Stearns County or if they're outside the county. So if it's outside the county, those situations, we probably would not find until after election day, and then we would send that up to the county attorney for investigation. In reality, that happens very, very, very little, so. But yeah, if that does happen, that is a situation that we would forward on to the county attorney.
Okay, I just figured a question that could pop up.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Persky?
Yep, Randy, I want to go back to something you just had mentioned. So as far as actually people coming in to vote, we've had very little evidence of people coming in and voting and saying, you've already voted, or that somebody under your registered name has been here already.
Right, I, we've never had that.
So you've never had that, okay. And obviously, with the number of voters we've had, that's pretty secure.
Right, and remember, that's a felony. So I mean, if you want to commit a felony and have a lot of your rights taken away, that's a good way of doing it, so. And those are easy catches, right? This is all recorded, you have a signature there, so.
And what I'm getting at is I think there's maybe a misconception that people come in and just want to show up and just vote. And that just doesn't happen.
No.
Yeah.
It's a very strict and regulated process, yep.
Okay.
And I know Dave is on the phone or on the line there too, so if he has anything he wants to add, he can do that too, so.
And David, did you want to add a little bit?
Well, I really don't have a full, thanks first of all for having us, but I really don't have anything to add to what Randy just said. I've been involved in elections 26 years. I think I've heard of one instance, and it happened in the city of Brooklyn Park, where somebody came in and somebody had signed in their spot. And I was with Hennepin County at the time, and we turned it over to the county attorney. I don't know how the investigation went, but one time in the 26 years I've been involved in elections.
Okay, thanks, David.
One last.
Commissioner Persky?
Yep, I'd say, the two folks we have on the line here, I want to go back to this past summer. I was at a conference out in Colorado, and we were meeting with Homeland Security. And they were talking... they were talking about folks coming in and trying to discredit the quality of our elections, the security of our elections, and that this is something that they've been seeing an increase of. They've also been talking or had mentioned that this is something that our adversaries would like to see, and so that they actually promote it on social media and things like that, is actually people that are trying to create chaos, trying to create mistrust in our government, and how unfortunate that that is. And I'm just wondering, are we doing anything in the state of Minnesota to counteract that?
Thank you for the question, I'll handle that one. So, you're right, there is evidence that foreign adversaries have realized the potential value of dis- and misinformation in the elections sphere, and for the most part, they don't care who wins or loses, they just want the chaos that results, right? And so, that has taken hold, that was observed in 2020 by various foreign actors seeking to just so mistrust and so discontent, and that gets grabbed onto by various factions and parties and whatnot here that run with it, not realizing that they're taking the bait, if you will. Here in Minnesota, we're watchful for it. Again, we rely on our, the assistance from our mostly federal partners who scrutinize that stuff to let us know when they see it happening. We have our communications staff and the secretary's office that's prepared to react with truthful information when we, if and when we should see that sort of thing, but we are watchful and mindful of that threat to our process and prepared to react accordingly.
I'll just add one thing to Bill's comments. When we brought Bill aboard in 2019, he was our cyber navigator. We've added a second cyber navigator to his team, but I put more on Bill's plate. He's now also our physical security person, so that's, physical security threats in the polling place and elsewhere are certainly something we are planning for and talking about and discussing with our federal partners.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
I was just wondering, since we have both of you, certainly as well as you, Randy, and your staff, because we've had people asking about the potential for our machines to have mischief done. I mean, a lot, you know, people get in, can you just talk a little bit about the security that's within, how the machines are both programmed, who's got access, when anything is transmitted? I recognize that our staff has done, Randy and your staff has done a great job talking about this, but there's a lot of information or misinformation swirling around, and sometimes it can be hard for people to know, how can you trust what's coming out of the machine? I mean, thank goodness we have paper trails, so that's really an important thing to keep having, but could you just talk a little bit about this, because it's come up often enough that it's probably worth having you to speak to it?
David, do you want to go first on that?
Well, I think Randy can talk about the physical security of the voting equipment, who's given access to the voting equipment, and the protocols in place to make sure that the voting equipment is secure before election day, on election day, and after election day. The one thing I'll add to Laura's comments at the very beginning of the presentation about the post-election audit, that's a very important piece of our election system. The law was passed by the legislature in the mid-2000s. I think we did our first post-election audits in 2006. The threshold is one half, at the time, was one half of 1%, so if the hand count differed from the machine count by more than one half of 1%, then more precincts are selected to be audited. During the entire time from 2006 until today, we've never had an escalation. Our machines are incredibly accurate. In fact, in 2021, the legislature actually raised the threshold, so now if the difference in the hand count from the machine count is one, basically one quarter of 1% difference, then more precincts are, will be audited. Our office supported that, because I think it shows, there's a process in place that we make sure that our election equipment is working, not only after the election, but Randy and his team, and as was mentioned in the presentation, the cities and township test every piece of equipment that's used in the election before it's used, and it has to be working 100% accurately before it can be used on election day. So, there are things we have in place to make sure that the equipment is tested beforehand, and we audit it after the fact. So, I mean, again, during my 26 years in elections, I think our voting equipment has proven to be very, very accurate.
And if I could just add one note from sort of that straight security perspective. So, you have to look at security of these systems in the entirety. So, as David said, it's the physical custody of the machines, it's the certification testing that's done at the federal level, it's ensuring that the systems are used in accordance with the certified configurations. All of those aspects together are what gives the security and integrity of the system. And so, if you see a YouTube video of a hacker at a convention in Las Vegas who's showing how he can access a voting machine, when he can take the back panel off and connect some alligator clips here and there and tie in his laptop, again, you've taken away one of the fundamental aspects of the security of these systems, which is the physical custody of these machines. And so, you have to look at the entirety of the ecosystem of security, if you will, to understand how they're protected and secured.
So, on the physical security part, we did have the Department of Homeland Security come in and do a walkthrough, and they are, for the most part, dealing with the physical security part and giving recommendations for that. So, we took those recommendations and implemented those. We also met with the county sheriff and talked about security. So, machines, of course, are in a locked building in a locked room, so, and there's only a few election staff that have access to that room, so I don't even have access to that room. So, it's very secure. And then, obviously, with the clerks, when we give them the machines, they're expected to have that, and are advised on the same security procedures that we use, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, I think that's helpful information.
Yeah.
Okay, last thing is canvassing. Canvassing board reviews and approves the results before they are official. The county canvassing board, we canvass the federal, state, and county offices. The local city, township, and school districts canvass their own races and questions, and then the federal statewide office and legislative districts, and districts that cross county lines are certified by the state canvassing board. So, the county canvassing board is made up of five members, myself, the court administrator, the mayor of the city of St. Cloud, and two members of the county board. If somebody is not able to attend, the member of the canvassing board can appoint somebody. They need to be eligible voter of the county. If they do not find somebody, then I will find an eligible voter of the county to serve in their place. So, with that being said, we do need appointment of two county board members to serve on the county canvassing board.
And I guess maybe for Bill and David's sake, I don't know if they're still on, but I guess we appreciate them spending a lot of time.
Yeah, so if you're done with questions for them, we can let them go, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great, Kevin.
Thank you, David and Bill. Greatly appreciated, thanks.
Okay, so it's going to be our criteria being we're all five up for election?
Yeah, so, you, the county board member, if you're up for election, you cannot serve on the canvassing board, but you do have the ability to find somebody and appoint somebody in your place. So, even if, you know, obviously, at least one of you or two of you are going to be appointed to the county canvassing board, then you have the option of finding somebody to serve in your place, and they have to be eligible voter of the county. And if you don't, then I will find somebody in their place, so.
So, we'd still appoint two commissioners, and then?
Yep.
Whoever's running?
Yes.
So, could, like Commissioner Mergen, being he's not running, actually?
He would certainly be a good choice, and he'd at least have one on there, assuming that he'd want to serve that, yes. He doesn't have to, you know, you can pick two other ones, but obviously, that would be nice, if Jeff would, so.
And Mr. Chair, the person, the people need to be available on November 14th at 9:00 AM. We ran into some challenges with that, with the primary.
What day would that meet, Randy? The canvassing board?
Yeah.
What day would that canvassing board be meeting?
November 14th was just a Monday at 9:00.
What time are you looking?
Nine.
Nine.
We have an extension committee meeting at 9:00 in the morning on November 14th.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to volunteer to be on that. Again, last time, the primary, I had a family crisis and wasn't unable to attend, and I have not had the chance to serve, so if I could be part of that.
And you'd have to?
And it means finding somebody else.
Right. Oh. I guess I'd be willing to volunteer, too, if?
Well, you're on the extension committee, too.
Right.
But you'll find somebody else.
Oh, you'll find somebody else. Oh, I could do that, too, I suppose.
Would you like to do that?
I can do that, I can find somebody else, I suppose.
So, we would need a motion, too?
And the motion should include also the date and time.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that Commissioner Persky and Commissioner Mergen either serve if they are able, or find somebody else to serve. If they are unable or by statute not permitted to, to be part of the canvassing board on Monday, November 14th at 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Well, the, when the canvassing takes place, the time is adjustable, it's just date-specific, it's not time-specific. So, if you wanted your schedule adjusted so you can hit both meetings, wouldn't that be a possibility?
Oh, we can also talk to Extension, maybe they can move theirs back a little bit, too, right? That one's a little more difficult, because the individuals on there.
We're the minor people involved with that.
You do, okay.
I mean, I don't think this has to be a roadblock.
I'll find somebody, Lee.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have the motion, we just need a second.
Lee, you want to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that, and then I'll have follow-up questions.
Any further discussion?
Hmm?
Further discussion, or are you?
Not on the, not on the motion, but on the presentation.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, saying if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
In the, we didn't know it at the time, but the appeal by Jerry Ralph in the last local legislative race was almost like a ground school for contested elections. Certainly, it wasn't complete, because as I understand, Jerry only had questions about four precincts, and after those four precincts had been recounted, he elected to terminate his appeal. Could you, now, we've adopted a process and got an explanation of how this works, how is the process now for an appeal different from just two years ago?
It has not changed.
It's the same?
It's the same, right.
Okay.
So, you know, the other process is they can go to court and, you know, do a lawsuit or file something there to contest elections, so that's a different process also, and then different things can come into play, but discretionary recount, the candidate, like Jerry, has the ability to pick what precincts and when to start and when to stop, you know, how many to go through, so, because he's paying for it, so.
And there's still, and there's a fee involved in a recount, correct?
In a discretionary recount, yes, yep.
All right. Okay, that's a ton of information, but I didn't know how the?
Yeah, so the publicly funded one is what's often referred to as the automatic recount, and it's not really automatic, the candidate still has to request a recount, but that's that really narrow, you know, one quarter, one half of 1% difference. If it's above that, that's when, you know, the candidate can still ask for a recount, but then they have to pay for it. But they have the, like Jerry, he picked a few parcels that, or a few precincts that he wanted counted, and that's what happened, so.
Do they have to select the recount? I mean, do they have to select the precinct, sorry?
Um, I think he could say he wants the whole thing recounted, but I think then there's just a cost consideration for him.
Okay.
And he just noted, well, I want to start with those three and see where it goes. So, then after those three, he stopped, so.
Oh, then, if, if that, if the recount on the selected precinct would have indicated a change, he may have, we can't second-guess him now, but he may have requested the continuation?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, he could have selected one and said that was fine, he could have selected a few of them and said, no, I want to do all of them, and that would have been fine, too, right?
So, how do you price that?
Well, right, we just look at the cost of the election judges that are there and try to come up with a number, right? So, our cost is, of course, the cost of the county time. You know, their cost is getting people there, and then the other candidate also typically has people there, so, yeah. And it is a big process, I mean, you have a lot of people in the room when you do a recount, so.
And Mr. Chair, I think one of the considerations, my understanding from him at that time, was there had been some political swirl around Dominion voting machines, and Chevron County was using them, so he picked three precincts that used those, and it demonstrated that those machines were accurate. And I think that was part of what he was looking to do, I, which is actually helpful, if people are not sure about how machines are working, sometimes finding out that they do work is a good thing.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you again for some more updated information. With that, thank you and the staff for presenting that, and David and Bill for joining us. The next item, Commissioner Persky?
Randy, any comments about early voting? Has, how's it been going?
It's been going good. I know early, we had a, you know, a pretty big initial push, I think a lot of snowbirds came in to vote, and so it's been steady since then.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then our next item deals with human resources, and it'll be a closed session. So, with closed session, everyone will be asked to leave the boardroom. So, the closed session is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 subdivision 1B for discussion of labor agreements between County of Stearns and Minnequa Patrol for a period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024. And are you presenting, Mike?
No, staff should be in.
Okay. Oh, she's out there.
Yes.
Jennifer's out.
Yep.
All right, we'll come out of closed session, and the recommended board action is to approve the agreements between the County of Stearns and Minpea Patrol for a period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor saying five, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And then our last item is issues by commissioners before we take a break and meet with the town officers. Commissioner Landsmeyer, nothing? Commissioner Mergan?
I wish to go back to this issue of the DFL Letter of Support questionnaire that came out for candidates. And this letter came out from the District 14 DFL Chair, and it went into District 13, which was kind of interesting. That warranted a little bit more investigation, and it turns out that the Senate District 13 DFL Chair, Harry Belknap, is currently a candidate for Stearns County Commissioner in District 3. And he's currently avoiding any of this mentioned in his, in his ads. And I think it's time that people know that, that he is an DFL operative here.
He's not a chair. He's not the chair.
Well, I don't know. According to what I have, Harry.
He's not.
This says, this says he is. He's the Chair, Vice Chair, Chair's Marty Hinky, Secretary Jim Reeve, Treasurer, Thomas Schutz.
It was, it was changed. My understanding is he was briefly at.
Well, then he has been in the past, the DFL Chair.
Before he decided to run, very briefly.
Anyway, any of this is being avoided in his ads, but if he isn't currently, he has been in the past. And it's interesting that this came from a District 14 Chair versus the District 13, which is what that district is. This is getting more and more interesting.
Okay, Commissioner Persky?
Just a couple of things. I hope you folks have had the invitation to Warner Lake tomorrow, so if you can make it.
Yep, some of us are going.
We'll be out there, hopefully. Yep, I believe it's 5:00 o'clock, yeah, so that, that should be good. And then also, Randy, I just want to thank you for your work on the elections.
Oh, geez.
Yeah.
That's remarkable.
You know, and pulling their guests in today, it was good to have them here and, you know, reaffirm what's going on. And just applaud, you know, the volunteers, the, the election officials that we have across the county for the job that they do. And, and some of the unfortunate things now that they have to put up with, we don't want them to get discouraged. We're behind them, we support them, and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, always, always support the election judges. They're in the trenches, so that would be helpful.
And you're too polite, you're too polite to start your presentation by saying, "Just in case, the facts matter."
Yeah. So, we don't plan on getting back the next one. That's kind of concluded our election education. If you have anything more you would like us to cover, we certainly can do that, but we're not planning on.
Do you want to maybe give a phone number in case somebody would like to call that's listening?
On the, for election.
For election.
So that would be the 320-656-3920, 656-3920.
Okay, thanks, Randy.
And Randy, just also, you know, we want as many people to vote that are registered to strengthen our democracy. And, and some people, you know, come election day, they might not feel good, or, or something comes up and they can't get their, they're working. Anybody within the county can come in and vote early, is that correct?
Yeah, it's open to everybody. We have multiple locations. Certainly call that number if you have any questions, and we'll direct you to a place. And, yeah, like you said, we want Stearns County's voices heard, and that's how we do it. We do it at the polling place, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you. I really didn't have anything, but I do actually think it's probably worth responding. I don't know if it's a candidate that keeps trying to bring this up, Commissioner Mergan. I'm so glad that we try really hard to stay out of what different independent groups might be trying to do, and we have one former DFL representative running against somebody else who's been involved with the party, and we have a Senate District who very unfortunately decided in both parties to do things in local elections, and I wish they hadn't. District 13 does have one part of that area. It seems kind of crazy to be doing it, but actually two, St. Joseph and St. Augusta are in, they're in two different precincts, so in District 2 has part of it, and District 3 has, in its new configuration, and personally, I just, well, everybody, I think we do a good job keeping our own personal politics out of this room. It's sad that both feel compelled to do something formally, but District 13 Republican Party has made contributions to local candidates. So it's just, it's an interesting thing. I think the bottom line is everybody's got to go out and do their own work. I know Commissioner Landsmeyer's working hard doing his own work, and some of us got kind of lucky this year, but hopefully we're all communicating with our, our own folks as well as learning about each other's districts because we work on behalf of all of them, so it's kind of unfortunate, but there's not a lot we can do about it because it is legal.
I won't even put a lawn sign in in someone's yard if they have a lawn sign with a partisan candidate. The strength of how we do things, one of the strengths is that it's not partisan. And as a result, I think that definitely has merit. On a local level, I think it creates more problems than solutions.
Actually, saw an interesting thing on Sunday. We were doing a hate ride, and both people running in District 3 were on the same lawn, and both their signs, so.
But again, there's only one party that sent out a questionnaire from the Senate District Chair.
And there's only one party that's given money.
Some people, you know, as running for, and they align themselves. For instance, if I'm running and Amy Klobuchar is coming to town, and I ask if I can appear with her, that's on me. That's not from the party chair for that district. That's a totally different entity. And that's the part that's upsetting to me. And nothing came down from the other party. I'd be upset with that, too.
They gave donations, and that means that somebody had to vote on it. It means their officers voted on it because that's how it works. So both are doing it, and I wish they weren't.
I haven't seen it from the other party. I'd like to see it.
I would be happy to forward what was sent to me. It was, you could see the contributions. So, again, I wish both weren't. I, I share your frustration. I just think it's important to be saying both are doing it.
Frustration.
Well, I, I think as county commissioners, we just want to do what's best for the citizens.
Exactly.
Because as long as I've been on, it's worked good. We've all, you know, we've had differences, voted different on different issues, but at the end of the day, we walk out of here, and, and I think we all feel good. What we decided was in the best interest of the people, and, you know, the rest is what it is, but.
And, Mr. Chair, one of the things.
Yeah, at this level, here, this county, back in the day, this, this activity was a hell of a lot more contentious than it is now. So I'd rather be doing this now than back in the day, but I was young and stupid. And, you know, thought, well, this is what you're supposed to do.
Now you're no longer young.
Being a good Catholic, I thought, well, this'll get me a higher place in heaven. I won't be so long in purgatory since I went through this, but, yeah, this is way better.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, having served in the legislature as well as on this board, I gotta tell you, I mean, it's it's so much easier here to go ahead and put not only those pieces, I mean, I've always been somebody, I was uncomfortable having initials after my name. The first time I ever had any was when I was running. And it's because no party or group of people have all the best ideas. So listening, one of the things I love about our county board and about our communities, you know, working with the chamber, working with Rotarys, working with other groups, is that we can kind of get past a particular version of anything and just kind of get through it. So regardless of who wins, I hope they come and get, they got to take a hat off and that we work together to really do, as you were saying, Mr. Chair, what's best for the residents, the people working with them in our, in our county.
Mr. Chair, I will respond also to what Terrell said. I very much appreciate not having letters by our names. I think that would very much undermine our ability to have dialogue and communicate with one another and, and to vote independently. It's, it's been very nice to be able to irritate both parties when I make a decision.
That's true.
So.
We don't always appreciate the impact of seemingly insignificant events in our lives in the long term. The two words I once uttered, once upon a time, that had the most influence on my decision of what to run for, when to run for, was, "I do." Alice made the point that, you know, look, you know, you're not going to leave me at home with little kids and be off running for the legislature, of which I've had three opportunities. And I have to now, you know, publicly thank her for keeping me out of the soup, and this has been a good run. I've had as much impact here as I ever would have in that situation. So, you know, you never really anticipate the net effect of certain decisions we make. In the long run, it plays out.
Okay. I guess the only thing I have is I'll be attending the County Fair Committee's meeting tonight, and invite me to attend as they're looking to do some improvements, so probably bring something back to you, Mike, after that meeting. Otherwise, we'll adjourn, and in 10 minutes, we'll be meeting with the town officers. So with that, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.